You guys ready?
Ready.
Ready. Okay, we're gonna call the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019 to order. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
It's all starting out a little rough there, isn't it?
I know. We should just sing. Let's sing the traditional anthem. Something different.
We're a little rough up here, Albert. Had a different beat to that pledge.
That'll be covered by the city, right?
Okay, good, good. I'm gonna need a lot of lessons on that end.
So number two is welcome our new planning commissioner, Phil King. He must have changed his mind already?
No, he's one of the ones who told me that he could not be here tonight. He's moving his father in Montana.
Oh, okay. All right.
Well, welcome.
Welcome, Phil. Yeah.
Happy to have you. Time.
Number three, audience comments. Not on the agenda, but seeing nobody in the audience, we'll have none of those. So number four, A, public hearing for amendments to chapter 20.212, dangerous and unfit buildings.
So, uh, tonight Doug Price, our code enforcement officer, is here to talk about this issue. And, um, this is, uh, on a somewhat expedited schedule because we have a pending code enforcement case that this needs to get taken care of in order for us to process an appeal. So that is why it is here for you for the first time and a public hearing on the same night. So Doug?
Do they need to close the hearing?
I didn't open it yet.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's, I did, I didn't understand the process. Okay, so, um, this, chapter 20.212 is something we adopted a couple of years ago to enable us to start working and dealing with dangerous buildings, buildings that are unfit for habitation or other uses. And it's working well, but at the time, we didn't have many options with regard to how to handle hearings, or appeals, excuse me. And so we went with the building board of appeals as the appeal body that would be in this code. Uh, but in practice, that started to appear to not be the best choice. The building board of appeals is established under the building code, and their purpose under the building code is to review alternative materials and practices, things that aren't, uh, aren't in the building code, but would be equivalent to the what's in the building code, and to rule on interpretations of the building code by the building official. And it's a group of local professionals who are, would not be getting paid for those duties. And so the nature of dangerous building appeals is very different. It doesn't really involve interpretation of the building code. A lot of the violations are related to the building code, but a lot of them are also, uh, just dilapidation, buildings being left vacant and attracting vagrants, and those kind of things, uh, yards full of junk vehicles and garbage and all of that. And so to bring that body in, uh, to hear those kind of appeals didn't seem appropriate. On the other hand, the other option was the hearing examiner, and the hearing examiner can be very, very expensive. And in the interest of substantial due process, you can't pass that cost on to an appellant in this kind of case. Where the government is coming in and saying, "We're going to tear your house down." Uh, you can go and spend $3,000 here appealing that action, trying to defend yourself against the government. Uh, you know, that's, that's not due process. So we went looking for another option, and what we decided would be the best would be to approach our municipal court judge and see if he would serve separate from that capacity as a local hearing officer for abatements, and he is willing to do that. So that leads to the amendments to this code. And there are several, uh, several aspects of the amendments here. One is changing the terms over from building board of appeals to hearing officer. Uh, the other was, we had our development director who was holding the initial complaint hearings, identified as officer, and so then when we have officer and hearing officer in the code, it gets confusing. Uh, so we needed to change up the titles. And then some of the language, a lot of this language came out of an RCW that kind of directs how this code has to be put together. But a lot of the language in that RCW is really clumsy. And so we had just taken it straight from that when we first started this. And so there are other changes in here that just seek to clarify the process of filing appeals and hearing appeals, uh, breaking things out to where they're a little more understandable. So that's what you have presented tonight. There are several other pieces that go with this that this body doesn't need to consider because they're not part of the development code. But in our appointive officer code, uh, in title two, we have to create the position and create the rules around the position and, uh, some other things. But this is strictly to amend chapter 20.212 for that purpose.
And who was it you spoke to about being the hearing officer?
Is our municipal court judge.
Okay, and that was just a one-on-one conversation with that particular judge?
We're working through that still, uh, in a negotiation with him. But the expected cost, you know, we're talking maybe one or two appeals a year. Uh, so the expected cost is far below the threshold where we would need to put it out for public bids or anything like that.
Actually, where I'm actually driving towards is we're on number six, where you have hearing officer shall mean the person designated by State Port Orchard.
Uh-huh.
But it doesn't delineate any of the qualifications of that person.
So... That's, yeah, that'll, that's where the title two, uh, provisions come in. So in title two, or chapter 2.08, which is the appointive positions, that's where the hearing examiner and the city attorney and other positions are identified, and it spells out how those are hired.
And what their qualifications are to be, such as a judge.
Yes, and then, and then companion to that would be a chapter 2.82, which would be abatement hearing officer, and that spells out the qualifications for the position, uh, the compensation, uh, the duties, the level, the authority, and all, so all of that is contained in 2.82.
Okay. Just so it's clear, because it... Obviously, it isn't here.
Sure.
So, did you have any more to add to it before I open up? Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing for, uh, chapter 20.212, dangerous, dangerous and unfit buildings. Seeing no audience members, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do you guys have any other questions?
I don't have any issues in it, and I love that, uh, proposed hearing officer is one of our alumni. So I'm very comfortable with that.
Just to be clear, you aren't actually voting on the specific person to be put in that position.
Right.
That's the discussion we were having, uh, tangentially related to this.
Yeah, but the amendments to the chapter, I don't have any objections.
I, I'd like to make a motion that I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt the updated POMC chapter 20.212 as submitted. May I start, Doug?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Here you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Some of you need to see discussion recommendation continued from June for sexually violent predator housing permanent ordinance.
This is the same ordinance that the planning commission reviewed in June and held a public hearing on. And if you remember, you just had a couple of questions about a couple of clauses in the language that you wanted me to check with the city attorney on and just get back to you. You closed the hearing, so this is just a continuing discussion and hopefully a vote and recommendation. Um, I did get some information back from the city attorney, which was attached as an email, but I just noticed as I was looking through this, we keep having a problem with her for some reason. We send emails back and forth, she can't read certain sections of what I send her, and I can't read certain sections of what she sends back, and it's, it's happened when it's sent to Nick too. So I just realized one of her answers got cut off, but I know what she said, so I will relay that to you verbally. Um, her answer that didn't get cut off was, the question was, "How wide should the area be where the community is notified that one of these secured, um, facilities is going in?" And the, the recommendation that we had in here was a half mile. And, you know, it was kind of like, "Well, is that really sufficient for the community to know and understand, you know, what, what this facility is, should everybody in a wider range be notified?" And this is much larger than our standard range. If it's a, if it's a, you know, an application for a subdivision going in, our standard notification range is 300 feet. So this is considerably wider. Um, we had proposals from the commissioners of up to two miles, which of course would be a considerable amount of the city. Um, and the advice back from Sharon, our city attorney, was, "Well, you can really, there's no state limitation. It just has to be applied evenly." So if you want to say it's two miles, okay. If you want to say it's half a mile, okay. But you're gonna probably need to do this consistently, not like this one house is coming in, "Okay, it's two miles here." But over here, eh, you know, maybe half a mile's okay. So we need to set it into code, and we need to apply that consistently. And so it's really kind of going to be up to you as to what you recommend, uh, recommend here, if you want to discuss that a little bit further. Uh, if you think there's a reason that you would want to recommend more than half a mile, I, you know, I think we can have that discussion. The other issue that was asked about was having backup power sufficient to energize the safety and security systems in the event of a power outage, and there was some concern about, "What does that really mean?" You know, doesn't, doesn't that seem a little wishy-washy? You know, what's sufficient? And Sharon said, "This is actually meant to put the responsibility back on the operator of the facility." The city is not in the business of licensing or operating these facilities, nor planning the design of them. This is what the independent operator does themselves, under a permit from the state, under very strict guidance. And so we want to put that responsibility on them under state mandate as to what is considered sufficient. So, and the problem is, if we put something in here that said, "You have to have emergency power sufficient for 12 hours," what happens if there is something in the 13th hour? Then we're liable. So that, we don't want, we do not want numerical standard in here that the city has established, that the city is responsible for enforcing, and so they point to us and go, "Well, you said you really had to have it for 12 hours." So we really want that to be back on the operator. We don't want to set the standard. So that, that was the answer that I received. So I'd be happy to have any further conversation about that.
So what do you guys think about the distance?
Well, a half mile, I was trying to visualize it. A half mile is like, what, two city blocks? Or is that, I mean, I know it's two...
A half mile's gonna be like 12 or 15 city blocks. I mean, a city block is typically either 450 foot square, or it's like 600 by 200.
So in circumference...
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, the, the block dimension itself. So the long side would be like 600, maybe at the very highest limit. So a half mile's, what, 20, uh, well, a mile's 5280, so a half mile's 2640.
So if we were here, if this was the building, would it go up to the courthouse?
Past the courthouse.
Go to the park?
Uh, probably not quite to the park, somewhere in between.
And then it would just be that big of a circle around?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes, thank you. Very visual, so that really does...
Well, I guess the question I have is, how far will pop, would people be wandering around?
No.
I mean, these people are locked in, correct?
They are, they are not locked in the building, but they, they are secured onto the site. They cannot leave the site.
Okay, and how are they secured into the site, then? Because they're not locked in the building.
They have to have a secured perimeter. Is my, I am not familiar with the details of how they secure it, but they are secured into the perimeter. They wear an ankle bracelet, and they have to be accompanied at all time, physically accompanied by a, they determine a guardian.
Is it, and there's a fence around it?
That's my understanding.
Is it like the women's prison in Purdy?
I don't, I don't know anything about Purdy.
Or more like work release is what I envision. Work release is locked down. I mean, once they're in, they're locked down. Do we have any of these here? Remind me. I, I know I took notes the last time we talked, but...
The only one that I'm personally familiar with is the one in North Kitsap, just outside of Pauls Bow, but I think there are other facilities in the county.
Potentially more coming.
Yeah. I mean, I think a half mile's actually really far. I, I don't, I didn't, I don't have a problem with it being more than that, because I think you also open, I don't know, more people, more opinions, too. And I think, I think that can be hard in a community. Well, and if we're, I mean, if we're gonna mirror the Kitsap County code, and I don't know if that's constantly our plan, but... What do you think?
I had a question on the sightlines for the bus stops, or the, the schools with it. So what is that, what, what does, there's no distance set there, right? It's just like within the sight range or within...
Within the line of sight means that it's possible to reasonably visually distinguish and recognize individuals, so that it's, it's like you wouldn't be able to stalk an individual child.
Uh-huh. It just seems really vague, like open to interpretation to me, to, to have that. Uh, to have like a specific half mile that we're notifying people, but then it's within the line of sight. Is that the standard for the county?
No, this is from the state.
The line of sight isn't a notice requirement, that's a...
Right. It, so there will not be placed within the line of sight?
Right, I'm seeing the definition is, yeah.
But you can't, yeah, so you can see a school or make out identities from the property.
Right.
You can't have that facility within that proximity of the school. But if it's on the other side of a ravine with a bunch of trees, you could.
Right.
Wow.
So that's ridiculous.
So if the school is behind...
You don't want somebody sitting inside looking at kids.
But it could be within a block of a school, as long as the school was like on the other side of the block. I mean, it could, it could be back up to a school.
I think, though, in the big scheme of things, if it was to come down to that, there's no way they would allow that. There is no way they're gonna put that next to the facility next to a school. It will be shut down. There's, it just will not happen.
Right, but it, but it, it wouldn't be in violation of this ordinance, though, if it were placed right next to a school.
I'm sure it would in other ways. They can't be located adjacent to, immediately across the street or parking lot from, or within the line of sight. So at least they couldn't be like right next to them, even across the street.
Right, and remember, they're only going into four zones.
Oh, right.
So it's not going into any residential zone.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, and they're, they're all heavy commercial and industrial zones, so not going into anything that's probably right next to a school.
And so the predators that are conditionally released to these facilities, it's, uh, it's as part of their sentence? So they're, they're out of, they're not incarcerated, or they're not in jail, but there's, I mean, or they still are incarcerated?
They are incarcerated. This isn't conditional release. This is not like work release or transitional housing or anything like that. This is you are still fully incarcerated. Um, you're not going out to work in the community. You're not just going out to visit people or anything like that. You are full-time with a guardian.
Okay.
I'm calling it a jailer.
Okay.
Because you can't leave, and you are not like up for parole or anything like that. Your mental situation has been evaluated, and you have been, it's been determined that you are li, highly likely to reoffend, and you have mental and emotional difficulties in these particular cases that mean that you need to be in a secure facility for the indeterminate future. So that's why they, they have very small facilities. I think they have only up to four people right now in each one of these facilities. The one in Pauls Bow is four.
And they're privately contracted?
That's my understanding. These are not run by the state, but they are overseen by the state.
And do these exist because their, like, jail terms are up, or...
No, there's huge massive overcrowding.
Oh.
And that's not what I've been given to understand by the county.
These are essentially diffuse mini prisons.
Mini prisons, or you might even think of them as mental health centers. Because it's a combination here of, of criminal violations, plus they've been assessed, assessed as having severe mental disorders as well, which make them very likely to reoffend, and treatment is not necessarily going to help. I'm not a psychiatrist. I'm just kind of repeating back what I've been told.
Is there something planned? I mean, is something coming? Have you heard?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, so we're just...
This is, this is to get ahead of something coming that we don't have any code to address.
Oh, that's right.
Alrighty. And we can't just eliminate them, say, "No, we won't take any of them"?
No. No, this is considered to be one of the, um, essential land uses of central public facilities that we can't rule out. Like, we can't say, "We're not going to allow an airport. We're not gonna allow a jail. We're not gonna allow a hospital." This is one of those things that we have to find someplace for.
Okay. So a half a mile, is that what everybody was good with? Do we need to vote or anything, or to...
Yes, please. No.
Oh.
What?
No, because we continued it.
They held the hearing and closed it, but they haven't voted or done a recommendation.
Okay. So does somebody want to make a recommendation?
I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the draft permanent ordinance of this citing and development, of development of secured residential facilities for sexual violent predators to the city council as presented.
Second. Do we need to put in there about the half mile?
That's in there already. It was only if you changed it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Um, okay, another continuation from June, the discussion and recommendation of the tree canopy and significant tree code.
Yeah, so in June, Commissioner Bailey had a question about how we came up with the 30% requirement for residential neighborhoods, and so I emailed out a response. I did talk to the original author of this from Snohomish County, and they used a tree canopy tool to calculate what the canopy levels were in their existing urban areas. And that's how they came to the, the idea that they didn't want to lose tree canopy, so they wanted to maintain at least 30% canopy in single-family residential areas. With that said, you, you know, you can set that threshold at any level that you would want. Um, I did look at different areas of Port Orchard, and, you know, we have a bunch of north-south ravines running through town that have a lot of trees in them, but they're, of course, subtracted out when you do a net, uh, tree canopy calculation. And so without having the advanced, uh, mapping tools that Snohomish County has, um, it does appear that 30% is going to increase our, our net canopy over what we see in most of our single-family areas now, so I think it is an improvement in tree canopy. But, um, anyway, that's, that's where that number came from, and I think that was the, the sticking point on this at the last meeting. Um, but with that said, I, if there's other questions, I'm happy to take those, and we are still looking for a recommendation to approve this, so that it can go to the city council for approval.
I do have a couple of things to, to ask about. Um, and specifically to what you're referring to, the 30% is Snohomish County, and you're feeling that's reasonable to bring down to a city level?
Well, that's urban Snohomish County, so the urban growth areas that may be...
Overall.
Yeah, it's not rural Snohomish County, it's urban Snohomish County.
Okay.
So that would be the Marysville UGA, um, you know, the Everett UGA, any urban growth area that's associated with the city that's seeing urban development, but which is not yet annexed or incorporated.
Okay. And that's for no net loss at 20 years after the development is done?
Correct. Once the trees are mature, the idea is that you would have 30% coverage. And I, you know, I, I looked at just the area around downtown here, and once you take Blackjack Creek and the steep slopes, which are netted out of the calculation, I'd say that we're at probably 15% in most neighborhoods, and so going to 30% would be a significant improvement. And these are established neighborhoods. What's that?
I said 15%, and it seems to be decreasing.
It depends where you are, yeah.
The intent of this, is it more for aesthetic or for, more for habitat?
It's both. I think, um, when you do, when you would do a residential subdivision prior to, uh, our newest significant tree ordinance and prior to considering this, there is no requirement to do any landscaping. You, you would finish the, the subdivision out however you wanted to, other than potentially a, a landscape strip on the street, which is now a requirement of our code. So the landscaping that we got was entirely voluntary, and there's no, you can't force somebody to have a perfectly manicured yard or irrigation systems, because that's, you know, very costly. But as part of the development, we do want to see a landscape plan, and this is sort of the avenue to getting the developer to say, "Hey, how am I gonna put landscaping in this development, and what's it gonna look like long-term?" Because right now, once they sold the lot, they're out of it, and they don't care. So this is, uh, having some foresight on the front end of things and looking at what could potentially be saved to satisfy this requirement, in addition to making sure that they plant things going forward.
Then in, at the risk of delaying this again, shouldn't we look at it with the, um, landscaping code, the 20.128? Because these kind of conjunction together, I mean, they work together.
They do, but the, the only landscaping that's required in, in 20.128 is a buffer, and that's typically a perimeter buffer where you have a transition in land uses. Um, it also creates requirements for putting trees in parking lots when you're doing commercial development, but this is purely a residential requirement, uh, the way that this is, uh, set up.
Right, and that actually then begs another question that I had, is why isn't it including the other types of areas, commercial and industrial? I mean, I'm just as concerned about losing trees out of those areas, too.
So the, um, the purpose of the landscaping code, as it's currently written, is to create buffers between uses. And so it's...
In the commercial and industrial, or in residential?
Uh, well, between residential and commercial, where you have those boundaries. It's not between commercial and commercial. Um, and then, so there's, when you look at the landscaping code, there's three types of landscaping. There's full site obscuring, which is a, a barrier, a visual barrier. There's partial site obscuring, and then there's just a, a separation type buffer that doesn't have to have any visual barrier. And so those are the things that are required around the perimeter of a site. And like I said, when you have big seas of parking, you want trees and landscaping islands to kind of break that up and also, you know, reduce the heat island effect. But the, the purpose of the landscaping code is, is really about buffering. This is about, you know, establishing tree canopy in those residential areas, where typically buildings don't cover as much of the land, and you have a little bit more separation, you have yards. That's not, you know, our commercial zones allow like up to 85 or 90% site coverage in some cases. I think downtown, it's 100%, where you can, if you're on Bay Street, you can cover your entire lot with a building, if you want, right up to the sidewalk. So in a lot of commercial development, you're not gonna see large areas of open space where you could put trees. It's only gonna be the parking lot islands and the strip along the street where you have a, you know, planters or...
So if there's a lot that is heavily wooded and hasn't been disturbed in hundreds of years, if you put houses on there, a third of it has to be maintained for canopy. But if you decide to put a gas station, you can clear the whole thing?
Well, you can, but the significant tree, um... This repeats the significant tree.
It does.
It does. Yeah, so if, if the site is zoned to allow that, the only thing that's gonna keep vegetation there is our critical areas code, which there is a lot of critical areas. If, if there's undeveloped commercial property in the city, most of the time, it has critical areas somewhere on it, where you're gonna have a slope, or you're gonna have a wetland or a buffer, that's going to sort of mandate that some of that vegetation remains. We don't have a lot of forested commercial property in the city. Even the, the gas station project that's been somewhat controversial on Tremont is, uh, you know, is cleared at this point, and, um, they have to do required landscaping, but it's more of the type one landscaping that's not, not side obscuring, it's just create a buffer and a nice, uh, separation between hard surfaces.
So I guess that kind of goes back to my question about aesthetic versus habitat. It, um, it seems to me that some of this should be applicable to the commercial and industrial areas, too.
I don't, I don't know that it's viable. If you're gonna have commercial property, it's really hard to have canopy in an urban environment, except in the right-of-way. And so that's why we have really, we've gone from not requiring a landscape strip at all between the street and the sidewalk, to that's required everywhere in the city now. And then some streets even have center medians that are supposed to be landscaped with trees. And so the, the thoroughfare has become your, your green space, as well as the, the design guidelines require like a 2% open space. That has to be a usable open space as part of a development. So if you go down to Costco in Gig Harbor, they have the same type of standard, where you have that outdoor plaza. It's very unique to Gig Harbor, because Costco isn't keen on building outdoor plazas at a lot of their stores. Um, you have to, you have to create that type of space, but it has to be usable space as opposed to habitat space. But the, the neat thing's...
Obviously, if you've got trees down the median of the highway, it's not, that's purely aesthetic. It's, Bambi's gonna get squished in a... purely aesthetic, and Bambi's going to get squished in a day.
Well, it, it has a heat island effect, and really, when you look at, I mean, I think this, the most interesting studies on tree canopy relate to bird habitat. If you look at, at residential neighborhoods, they say that the only really positive environmental benefit of the suburbs has been that it is greatly enhanced habitat for, for various species of birds, and that's because you've, you've created these ideal conditions where it's not so forested that it becomes unusable, it's just this perfect density of trees for, for birds, and you kind of get that when you're doing street trees as well. But, yeah, you're right, it's not going to create habitat for other, other critters.
And on that, is there a way of incentivizing these third, these areas where they put these green portions to either those critical habitats, so they're up against them or near them, so they can incre- kind of magnify their effect? And/or incentivize them to where if somebody puts it on, if you had north and south properties, the people who own the north property put that green space to the south, and the south property puts it to the north, so you get a combined effect? Instead of having it scattered, and there's a big difference between having, let's say, eleven-acre lot, one acre is wetland, so that's taken out of the formula, you've got ten acres, you've got three acres that you need to donate or essentially become green, whether you've got three acres of single trees dotting all over the place, or a three-acre block of trees, makes a big difference on the effect on the environment and effect on, in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there's opportunities to do that, but at the same time, you don't want to be so prescriptive that you're making things even harder than they already are to develop. You, you have to have flexibility, and you have to, I mean, if somebody's got an irregular-shaped wetland buffer that creates, you know, kind of a, a, a piece of their property that's not particularly usable, that's a very logical place to just say, why don't we square off this buffer and make that usable? But, at the same time, if that, you know, if you're trying to activate the street, there's competing goals in terms of activating pedestrian space, you may want to put a building along the sidewalk, rather than putting green space along the sidewalk, and you really have to have that flexibility. I think you could state objectives or provide guidance, but I don't think you want to codify it in such a way that then somebody's coming in and asking for a variance later, because they can't fit into a narrow-
I'd be more comfortable with at least putting in there, you know, that these are advisable or recommended, but not necessarily acquiring it.
Yeah, I mean, we, and we can develop that guidance administratively, rather than even having to put it in code, I mean, we can do that on, there's, with every section of code that applies to a project, we typically do a checklist that we give the developer, and we ask them to explain how they've, you know, satisfied various requirements, and so that would be a, potentially a place to do that. But if, if you want it in the code, you can do it in the code, but it's going to say it is recommended that this happen, and there's no way for us to force somebody to do that.
I had a question about the significant trees. So, if the significant trees chapter is now repealed in its entirety, what is the definition? How would you define a significant tree now, if you're saying, for every significant tree, damage to significant trees to be retained, any significant trees identified in a landscape plan to be retained and subsequently damaged or removed during site development shall be replaced at a rate of three trees for each damaged or removed significant tree? So, how is that, how are significant trees being determined?
I think we have significant tree in the definition section of Title Twenty.
Yeah, the significant tree is a tree that's, I believe, greater than eighteen inches diameter breast height, and so-
There's a separate section in Title Twenty that's definitions.
So, that, that remains, though? That's not, the definition's not repealed?
Let me look it up real quick.
That's repealed, if we just need to redefine it, or define it again?
I think you're right, I think that definition does need to be moved into the new chapter. So, the significant tree definition on, I think we handed out twenty point one twenty-nine, and there's a definition of significant tree.
Move it into twenty-one twenty-nine zero two zero?
Yeah, at the bottom of the second page, there's a definition of significant tree, and that could easily be moved into the, the tree canopy ordinance.
Okay.
And then, is there any thing to say that the species of tree that's being replaced in the significant tree, there can be any, it doesn't need to be the same species of the tree that's being removed?
We don't have that requirement.
There is a, it just says evergreen or a deciduous mix, and not alders. And we have a list, I believe, at the back of our landscape code of species that are recommended for Port Orchard.
Those like native-type trees that we're talking about, or-
What's that?
Are those native trees, type trees?
I think it's a mix of native, I mean, when you're talking street trees, typically street trees, you want very specific characteristics, so they don't rip up the sidewalks or cause damage, but-
Usually a limited height, non-invasive roots, and not thirsty.
Yeah, I think- Twenty point one twenty-seven, right? Or one twenty-eight?
The what?
The landscape code? Anyway, I think the, you know, there's a variety of things for street trees. I mean, you can do some non-native things, like ginkgo and European hornbeam, and then there's more traditional things, like maples and big-leaf maples and red cedars, western red cedars and dug fir, I mean, all that-
Essentially, no nuisance trees or invasive species type?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's going to depend on the location, what you can do in the right-of-way to street trees, it's going to be different from what you can do separating two properties on, on private space, because again, you know, below wires or in the right-of-way where utilities run, you have more limitations on, on how those trees can grow.
I got more. And the twenty point one two nine point zero three zero talks about exemptions. The first one, where removal hazardous trees, which is also addressed in twenty point one two nine point zero four zero, the next paragraph. Clarify, what is it you're looking for from the arborists or their qualifications? If you take a, a lot of forested evergreens, and you remove all but one, that tree now becomes a blow-down risk. What keeps them from taking down that last one after they've built the house and say, well, now it's a blow-down risk?
So, well, first of all, when you, when you have an approved landscape plan for your development, it becomes a binding condition of the permit, and if you go and amend the landscaping that was approved, or take landscaping out, that's a zoning violation, and so that's, it becomes a code enforcement issue. So, typically, when you're going to put together a plan for what stays and what goes, we're probably going to point out that if you're taking most of the trees on your site and you're creating that blow-down risk, or it's right on top of a house, we're going to catch that in the review process and say, you need to either increase the separation between this stand of trees and your, what you're proposing to build, or you need to just take all the trees and replace it, because we don't want to establish a hazard here that's going to result in somebody taking the tree down later.
Okay. So, you'll catch that, what, during the permitting phase?
Sure. I mean, that's, that's just part of line review.
And then, number two. The, those are an exempt set of single detached house duplex residential accessory structures that are not part of subdivision? That entire group is exempt from this tree canopy requirement?
Correct. And the key is that not part of a subdivision. If the subdivision is reviewed pursuant to this code, this compliance with this code becomes a binding condition of the subdivision, and the house isn't exempt. But if you have a legacy lot in the city, and, you know, if somebody, the street's already in, there's no landscape strip, I mean, this is, we're not looking to hit you with hiring a landscape architect or somebody to prepare a landscape plan for your single house, because that's, you know, going to cost several thousand dollars, and we're not trying to make houses significantly more expensive. But if you're doing the subdivision, that's when we want the landscaping plan put together.
But you also don't want somebody clear-cutting all the trees on their single lot property, either, do you? There's not, there's nothing to prevent them from doing that.
This is about new construction.
That was going to be the next question, is why is it only new construction and not?
Yeah, this is when you're coming in for a permit, and so if you have to clear, in order to get your pad to build your house or your other accessory structures, we're, we're not saying you have to prepare a landscape plan or a tree replacement plan, just to come and input a single-family house in, and what Nick was saying, a legacy lot that's not part of a subdivision, that would be under this new code.
Right, but if they go to, if you have a house that you're going to remodel and rebuild a significant portion of the house, you have to come in and get permits and follow the newer codes, not the codes that were originally done and correct? Why wouldn't that pertain to their significant trees and canopy as well?
So, you're saying if they wanted to put a significant addition onto the house, that would require taking down a tree?
That they're going to have to cut down significant trees. Why wouldn't this include that as well?
It could. I mean, that's, that's something we could certainly look at, we could, I suppose you could keep the significant tree chapter and say that this applies to all development, unless the development follows the tree canopy ordinance as part of the development process, and that would be the alternative.
That would make me more comfortable.
Yeah, we could look at that in, in more detail.
I'm trying to read off my read of this.
We have a lot of good questions.
So, do you want to come back again with this, or do you want to vote on it? What would you guys feel comfortable with?
You've heard my concerns, is, would it be better-
Yeah, I mean, if, if the Planning Commission shares those concerns, we can look at kind of creating a path A for existing properties, and path B for, if you're looking to develop, this is an alternative to the tree canopy chapter, but I'm, I'm thinking out loud here, I would have to massage this a little bit and talk to my planners and see how we would make that work.
Yeah, that's-
I think there's enough changes here to warrant looking at it.
I'd like to wait until all of us are here. I rely a lot on Stephanie when we talk about anything environmental, and I don't, I don't like voting on anything environmental unless she's present. Okay, she's a lot of really good input.
And when we look at this again, can we also look at the landscaping stuff at the same time?
Yeah, we can bring in a copy for your reference.
Yeah.
So, we'll bring this back in, what is this one, October? Holy cow! I keep thinking it was June.
The year's running out.
The October's meeting. So, the next up is discussion, Title Twenty, Housekeeping Amendments.
That's really not as bad as it looks. This one, we wanted to just give to you and-
Sorry.
Oh, I thought that was- It is as bad as it looks, okay.
I was just clearing my throat, I apologize, my timing was bad.
This is, this is just a sort of collection of our corrections of the errors, omissions, and anachronisms that we've noticed over the past eight or nine months since our new zoning code was adopted. As we, as the planners have been working with the code, and the permit technicians have been working with it, we just naturally start noticing, oh, this didn't really work like we thought it would, or, oh, we thought, you know, this was this way, but it's really not. And so, we've tried to pick all of these up and just try to, to collect them in one ordinance, which will correct them all at the same time, and none of these are really significant. You know, we're not changing anything substantive in the code in terms of intent, we're just trying to clarify and process everything at once. We, we're going to try to do this, if necessary, as housekeeping, no more than once a year, I think that's what we agreed on. He's too busy, but listen. Okay, didn't want to commit. We're, we've, we've been trying to do this no, no more often than once a year, but just to try to, to go ahead and get everything through at once, so we don't have to keep bringing an ordinance every couple of months, every time we notice an error. So, that's why we've put it in here, and what I tried to do when putting this together was to do it in order of how, how it appears in Title Twenty, and to do a little explanation at the top of each header. So, as, as you can see, it's not in ordinance format yet, this was just to kind of give you for an initial discussion, give you the opportunity to ask some questions. We'll bring it back in October to, to see if you're comfortable making any decisions on it, we'll have a public hearing as well. If you're not comfortable, we'll continue it again. But I, I can kind of go through each of these sections and just go through the little overview and, and see if you have any questions as I go through it, and each one, stop me, you know, if you have a question. Does, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Or did you want to just fire off questions? That, that also works?
Yeah, I think go through it.
Okay. And going through it from the beginning, we made a few changes to Chapter Twenty Twelve, which is our definitions. We noticed that we didn't have a definition of accessory building, which is kind of important, since we do want to be able to approve accessory buildings. We made a number of changes to our accessory building standards, which I'll kind of get into as we work through there, but the important thing was, we had to define what it was, so that we could permit it. We made a couple of changes to how we defined facade, we had a couple of conflicting definitions, wanted to make sure we sorted that out. Principal building, again, just like accessory, we didn't actually have a definition in here, so we wanted to make sure we included that, so there was no confusion about what was a principal building. Application procedures, this one is more internal for our permit processing, just making it very clear about how our application review process works, project review, public notice, making it very clear that we don't have any contradictions here. Just, that was something that we had been requested to do by our office manager, because there were some conflicts here, and she just wanted to have that process smoothed out and clarified. We had some definitions, and I'm moving on to page eight here, we had some definitions that had inconsistencies about requirements for blank wall designs, for fourplexes, for townhouses, and for apartments, there's a maximum limit of blank wall that we want you to have, that isn't broken up by windows or other treatments, and there was one section of the design standards that said this, and another that said that, and so we really wanted to bring that down to the lowest numerical standard, so we made that correction here.
So, can I ask this a quick question? When you're changing these feet, like fifteen, from thirty-five to fifteen, was that anything that we voted on ever along the way?
It was in the last, it was in the code that you recommended, but we didn't talk about that number specifically, it was part of what we probably overwhelmed you with.
So, is that something that we should look at before it gets changed, or is that what's coming down the road, or?
Well, we'll wait, we, we did vote on it, it's, it's in twenty-one twenty-seven.
Yeah, it is in the code now, it's thirty-five feet. We're proposing that it be changed to fifteen, to be consistent with the other section of our code.
So, this is the discussion?
Correct. Twenty, twenty-one twenty-seven already has in it that the maximum blank wall facade distance is fifteen feet, so that was voted on.
Okay.
And by the Planning Commission, but we had in here, the twenty thirty-two, it was actually a greater distance, and we failed to pick up that contradiction. And so, we had meant that in here that it would be fifteen feet throughout, because we want it to be consistent, and since the newer code had the lower standard, we, we should have go back and revise the older code to be consistent.
Thank you.
On page eighteen, we wanted to correct the section of the code that indicates that townhomes are each on their own lots, and you have more than two. If you have two homes attached on one wall, and they're each on their own lot, the way that we define that is an attached home, that's not a townhouse. And so, we just had in here that, that a building type that accommodates two or more dwelling units could be a townhome, but actually, that's not correct. It has to be three. Three on three lots is townhome, two, two lots, that's an attached home, so we just wanted to correct that. So we just wanted to correct that. On page twenty, we wanted to correct the minimum lot size for the R1 zone except for cottage court developments. Um, we wanted to, we, we kinda meant to say that cottage courts could have individual lots as small as twelve hundred square feet, because as you know, the cottage court concept means you can have very small lots, which just basically have your house footprints in it on it, surrounded by a much larger common area. But we didn't mean it to say that in the whole R1 district, you could just have a single-family house on a twelve hundred square foot lot, just in a regular subdivision. So we wanted to clarify that in a regular R1, your, your lot needs to be a minimum of five thousand square feet. And then have it broken out separately to say, but in cottage court, twelve hundred.
Sure.
So...
That makes sense.
Starting on page twenty-three, um, this is where we, we, for some reason, I don't know why, nobody thought of this at the time, but we, we didn't think to put in accessory buildings being allowed in all of these zones. And so we, we broke down, you could have a townhouse, live-work, shop-front, and then we thought about, we didn't think about the fact people might want sheds.
Yeah.
Things of that nature. And so we didn't specifically put it in here, we didn't have a definition, now we do, and now we're saying we allow them in all of these zones. And as well as allowing accessory buildings, you can see where they're, go through here, accessory buildings are allowed in RMU, CMU. Um, we also changed, um, in some of these different zones, you will see that they, we have different setbacks for, um, principal building and accessory building, but in some of them, we didn't wanna actually, now that we have principal building and accessory building, we didn't really wanna distinguish. Some of them, it doesn't matter, just a building setback. We don't care what the building is, it's just ten feet or twenty feet or whatever. So we changed some of these to just say building setback, and it doesn't matter what it is. So that just clarifies that. And that's the same for DMU, GMU, I'm going into page thirty-one, same concepts. Allowing accessory buildings, spec, being very clear about whether it's principal setback or just general setback.
Forty-two, since...
Yeah, I'm just making sure there wasn't any other changes in those. So we're up to page forty-two, and I'll stop here for a second, were there any questions in any of these? Okay, so under self-storage, and you remember we did, um, an ordinance earlier this year, there was a map adopted along with, an interim ordinance replaced by a permanent ordinance, limiting self-storage facilities to just very, um, specific areas of town. And here, we kind of looked at this language, and nobody came in with a proposal that wasn't, you know, gonna be in the, in the spirit and intent of the ordinance, but we were kind of concerned about way, the way this read. Um, we were concerned that it said that it was permitted in areas within the self-storage overlay district and in zones were permitted outright. And we kind of thought that could be interpreted to mean either-or. So we wanted to make, make it clear that wasn't the intent, you had to be within the self-storage overlay district and, not either-or, but and also, um, within the zones where it was permitted. So we, we wanted to tighten that up, just in case anybody interpreted it the wrong way.
Does that make sense?
Um, next page, we deleted a sentence under exceptions for design standard, or for allowable building types, because it simply said this chapter doesn't apply in the light industrial or heavy industrial zones, and it does, because those zones do specify building types that are allowed. Um, build-two zone, we, um, if you look on the next page, page forty-four, we added a snazzy new illustration that shows how we would allow people to come in and ask for an exception to the build-two-zone requirements, where you have to have, um, a certain percentage of your front building facade located, minimum, maximum setbacks from the right-of-way and so forth. It's a great idea and concept, but we realized that in some situations, your lot or your access and your improvements that are gonna be required are going to be so constrained, you just may not be able to do it. So we wanted to have a process in place, if necessary, where someone could come in and say, I, I just can't do it, you know, based on meeting all of your other standards. Um, is there a way for me to come in and just do the maximum that I can to meet build-to-zone? And so this is what, this is what this does, is put that into place. Um, and this, this provides an illustration, just a concept of, of how someone can meet that requirement on a highly constrained site.
Does everybody understand what's on that drawing? I think this, this would potentially come into play with critical areas codes, where you have a buffer, and the buffer just makes it impossible to meet this standard, and so, um, we didn't wanna make it so formal as to require a variance, this is more of a, uh, the director can approve what makes sense for a particular site.
Yeah, variance has to go to the hearing examiner, and we didn't see the need to put people through that, so... On the next page, um, chapter twenty-sixty-two, mobile home regulations, there was a section there for temporary use permits. However, now that we have a chapter entitled twenty that deals specifically with temporary uses, this became obsolete, so we've deleted that. Um, the next section, this is all document form language, um, that we had requested for stamping maps, other documents to be recorded with the county. This is all pretty basic, just things that we want, that legal had asked us to include.
Well, this was actually the permit center manager had asked for. This had been in our old interim subdivision code under the old attorney, and then got chopped out when we updated the subdivision code. Our permit center manager thought that this was very helpful for standardizing how surveyors prepare their documents and what information is included, and it makes it so that we don't have to field phone calls and call around to the directors to say, hi, hey, what do you want on this form? It's just a catch-all, uh, this is what needs to be printed on the face of your document to be recorded.
I think also they had checked with the county auditor to make sure that if you put these things on here, at, in this form, they will not be sent back by the auditor when you try to go down and record documents, because it's not in the right language. So trying to make it easier for the customer in that sense as well. A few years ago, we changed the city's, um, city treasurer title to finance director, and so we've reflected that in the language. Um, on page fifty-one, um, PUMC twenty-one, twenty-seven, three-thirty, which is non-motorized circulation, non-motorized circulation and design, was not intended to apply to residential development outside of subdivisions. And so, um, we wanted to make it clear that we were not trying to impose that on all types of residential development, such as, you know, townhomes, detached houses, that kind of thing. This, this wasn't meant to apply to that level of development. Um, and also, design guidelines were not meant to apply to something like your backyard gazebo, your shed, nothing like that. We actually had someone actually feel that they were required to do that and come in and, and try to meet the guidelines, it was not good. So we don't want anybody else trying to do that, so we just clarified that. At the bottom of page fifty-three, just at the bottom, townhome driveway standards, they're now located in a different section. We've moved them out of twenty-one, twenty-seven, three-forty. So they're redlined out there. Um, page fifty-seven, this is like the, uh, blank wall maximum length in this table. We also had another conflict between the old code, twenty-one, twenty-seven, and the new code, twenty-one, thirty-nine, we should've updated it when we adopted the new code, and we just failed to do so. So we had, we wanted to make this, um, fair and consistent, and I think in this one, you had decided to go with a less restrictive...
I think that's more, twenty percent is more than the fifteen, which was the old, right?
Um, fifteen was the old. Twenty percent, twenty percent, you're right, twenty percent is less, is...
Yeah, so this is more windows on the ground floor facade, uh, on those street types.
Which was in the new code that you did vote on. So we're just making, we're making the old code consistent. And, let's see, land, sorry?
Sixty-two. Yeah, it's on sixty-two, the note is on sixty-one.
Yeah. Um, we wanted to be more clear about who was qualified to prepare a landscape plan, because we had a section in here that said just other qualified individuals in addition to a landscape architect or a horticulturalist. And we kind of went round and round about that, because I, I tried to find what, what other jurisdictions did, and, uh, the only other thing that I could come up with was a Washington-certified professional landscape designer, um, which is another certification in the state. But we were trying to get away from people just doing back-of-the-napkin designs without qualifications, and, you know, we, we did want somebody with some experience. We're trying not to make this hard for people, we tried to make it as broad-based as possible. When I did a survey of jurisdictions, it, it came down to either no requirements at all or very strict. I didn't find anything really in the middle. So this was kind of the compromise that we came up with, adding an additional category of qualifications, broadening the range of, of experts who could come in and design your landscaping, without just saying other quali, other qualified individual, which puts it on Nick to decide every time whether someone is qualified.
Yeah. And I, I think the planning commission has discretion here. I mean, if the planning commission's preference is to not require, I mean, we would still have like a minimum standard for what the plan must consist of, it must be professionally prepared, and we could provide an example, but, um, I think it's a lot easier when you have profession, for large developments, whether it's commercial or a subdivision, it's much easier for us to review when a landscape designer prepares this for you than, um, when you have a, a civil engineer or somebody else who isn't really trained as a landscape designer, but they're just kinda putting shrubs all over the place, and, uh, it's, uh, yeah, I, I, I think it's better this way, but I'm open to suggestion if you think we shouldn't be so strict.
And this applies to the irrigation designer as well, in the section below.
So, Washington State licensed landscaped architect, a Washington-certified professional horticulturist, or Washington-certified professional landscape designer? And you took out the "or other qualified individual"?
Yes. I had to make one determination on a "other qualified individual," which I did grant, uh, and the design was okay. It was, it, it was more difficult to review, but it was passable, but, um, I don't wanna be in the position of telling somebody that they're not a qualified individual, because I just don't wanna get into that argument.
Sure. That's fair. On, on page sixty-three, um, we just made sure that we had consistency with the, the earlier section of the code, twenty-one, twenty-seven, made sure that complied also with twenty-one, thirty-nine, by making sure all of our, our terms for residential building types, cottage courts, side-by-side duplexes, back-to-back duplexes were included, um, in our list of buildings here. Residential garage configuration standards, page sixty-four, we just had some errors in how we represented, um, how we should represent the lot width here in the tables, um, less than forty, wanted to make it consistent, less than forty feet.
That was my fault, that was a copy and paste error, where the same number got pasted three times rather than progressively increasing.
So we just wanted to clean that up, make sure it looked right, had, had the arrow pointing the right way each time. Um, and we did change for attached house, and honestly, Nick, I'm forgetting at this moment, why...
So remember we moved this from the other chapter where we had the drawing of the driveway?
Yes.
So, I think that drawing is supposed to be over here too, or did we get rid of the drawing altogether?
I think we got rid of it.
Okay.
Okay.
It's, it has the same effect, but the, we had a picture with words, and I think the words are plenty effective by themselves, and you don't need the picture.
My question was, we reduced it to forty feet from seventy-four feet on attached house. That was, that's the one thing, I can't remember why we did it.
Where?
On page sixty-five.
Seventy-four? That was where I copied and pasted the wrong number, because I had the...
Oh, okay.
With each wider lot, I had the same, uh, same number.
Gotcha, okay. And last, uh, when we moved our townhome standards, we wanted to go ahead and, um, move this section as well into one-thirty-nine, so all the townhome standards were in the same place, and just move the driveway standards for townhomes, attached homes, and duplexes into this section, so they're all in one place.
Nice.
Any questions?
This is just an introduction, and the hearing will be scheduled at your, at your next meeting, and any questions that come up, if you can email us between now and then, that will help us get you answers and, uh, be prepared or make any changes that might be needed, uh, in advance of the hearing.
Also, you know, I don't know if any of you have noticed anything as you've been going through our code this last year, if you've noticed any errors, or anything that you've seen that kind of seemed to contradict anything to you. If you have, let me know, it's not too late. If it's something that's come up that we haven't noticed, I'd be happy to add it.
One of the things that I've noticed, and this is slightly separate on this, is, um, in other organizations, when we have essentially a living document like this, where we track what changes were made and when they were made, um, and I, and even on some of the city codes I've looked at on some of the other cities, they say, you know, updated June two thousand and eighteen. Um, we don't have that on it, I haven't noticed that on any of these, kind of on a tagline. Would that be helpful to us to, to be able to know what we've looked at, when we looked at it? Something like this, we just looked at, what, back in March?
It will, so when we moved the entire code into title twenty and we consolidated three codes into one, that's kinda started over as a clean slate for us. Going forward, as code publishing adopts new ordinances, the new ordinance number will be listed at the end of every section that's amended, and so you'll notice in the code that there are usually parentheses that say ordinance number such and such, and if you go online to look at the code, that gets updated, and so you'll, you'll get a note that ordinance, and then the ordinance number is like zero-one-one-dash-nineteen, nineteen indicating the year that the ordinance was passed, and eleven being the number. So there is a notation there, once it's codified, but typically in our draft documents, it's not.
And the other thing that, in one particularly detailed organization I was in, not only did that, but they also would put a short note or footnote to why they did what they did when they made the changes. Um, the thought process being that they wouldn't unchange it without considering why they had changed it the first time. And I think it, and since the membership, you, in the planning department, is all dynamic, I mean, none of us are gonna be here another fifty years.
I am.
All right, one of us may be here fifty years.
Still the chair.
It provides a historical background for them to look at and, and understand what we did and why we did it.
And that brings up kind of an interesting point, because I can remember, um, years ago, I thought we had, the planning commission had made some sort of landscaping thing, if you built a home or gonna do a development, that you put in trees and, and this, and I thought you just said that we didn't have that. But I can remember having this conversation years ago.
We did not have anything in our code for the landscape strip, our public work standards. Every road section that was adopted said landscape strip optional, and so that was in the drawing, and so that is no longer option.
So that, okay, 'cause, 'cause I remember talking to, like, it was in the old days when we used to go out and we would, used to look, or go out to the properties and see what was coming, and we didn't have a hearing examiner, didn't have any of that, it was us, and we had talked about builders planting trees and making sure that they didn't die, and that was a long time ago.
There, when I got here, there were a lot of things that I learned about, uh, not because they had been adopted, but because they were on somebody's desk and they were using this tool that had gone to the planning commission but had never been codified, and so there, there was a whole design manual that we had that I said, where did this come from and is this actually adopted? And nobody could tell me. So, um, we're trying to get everything into our code, and so there may very well have been discussions of things in the past that didn't make their way into code, and it was sort of a, our design review process, it said you have to go through design review, but it didn't actually tell you what the standards were, and it was a, a design review committee that would sort of look at a project and say what they liked about it and what they didn't, and fortunately, nobody ever got appealed on that, but if you were to be appealed, how would you rationalize your, you know, your direction that you were giving a developer or a denial that you would give, so...
Any more discussion on the, on the housekeeping?
Please send questions to me. Thank you.
So F, the volunteer opportunity for the parks plan update section committee, or selection committee, sorry.
I can tell you a little bit about this. In the budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the council gave, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars to do a parks plan update, and we have to have an updated parks plan in order to apply for funding from the state recreation conservation office. That's where we got the grant to pay for a big part of McCormick Village Park, and our plan is now out of date, so we were eligible for that because we applied in twenty fourteen on a two thousand and twelve plan. You have to have a plan every six years. So we need to update our plan, and... So we need to update our plan, and that will make us eligible for funding, and also help us check in with the community to see what sorts of things are desired. We've started the centers approach to planning, we probably need to plan to have a park in every one of our neighborhood centers throughout the city, and so we really need to take a step back and kind of look at the whole park system, look at what we have, look at what we might need, and what the community would like to see, and then update that, as well as doing a Parks Impact Fee update, which will establish the impact fee that developers pay towards building our park system as part of new housing development. And Carrie is going to spearhead the consultant selection, which is going to involve, I think the ad's going out Friday.
Yes.
And we're asking for proposals from qualified firms to submit them to the city, we'll pick a few, interview them, I'm not involved in the interview process, because I am related to somebody who does this sort of work, and so that's why we're looking for volunteers to sit on the committee and advise on who the city council should hire.
Oh, okay. Any volunteers? When is this happening? The, as Nick said, the advertisement is going out this Friday, and it will close on September twenty-seventh, so...
Fast.
That gives them about a month to respond, and so we're hoping that the interviews will take place in the first half of October, and they will be during working hours, so that, you know, so that the consultant will come in and meet with the committee here in one of our conference rooms. So that would be the one restriction probably, is whoever, volunteers would have to be available during the workday.
Those workdays, if they can be specific workdays.
I'm sorry?
If they're specific workdays, I can possibly do some.
Yeah, and right now, I don't know what that would be.
I schedule more flexible on Wednesdays and Fridays.
Yeah, we're going to have, Councilmember Deener is going to be on the committee, and he works at Kitsap County, so he's got to work around his schedule, so we'll have to work to find a day for interviews, and it's probably, I would guess, an hour per consultant to interview, and you'll probably interview three to four firms, depending on how many people submit.
Separately or concurrently?
Separately, one after another.
One week and, every other week, or something like that?
One day.
All in one day?
I hope so, yeah.
There's a chance lunch will be provided, but...
I'm willing, but again, it depends on what day and what's going on with my staff at that day. I think as soon, I'll check back with Scott and see if he's had any luck getting his community representative, so I will try next week, starting to try to narrow down what dates work for people. If anyone here is interested, let me know, I mean, even just potentially, and then I can start trying to find out whose dates are available, what time, so Dave?
Huh.
Trish? Nanette?
Everybody. I have an idea for the community representative, I'd have to talk to her, but I mean, she's a master gardener, she's traveled all around the world and gone to many parks, so, and she lives here in the city, so if Scott hasn't been successful finding a community representative, I know somebody who might be interested.
Yeah, would you, would you ask her to call me, and I'll talk about it with Scott as well?
Yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
All right.
And I will also reach out to the other planning commissioners who aren't here tonight, just to see if any of those three also have an interest in this, so they don't feel like they were overlooked.
All right, so, are we done with that? Are we done?
I think so.
Minutes. Okay. So now we're on approval of the minutes from June fourth.
I have May seventh, too.
We'll get back to that.
Oh, okay.
May seventh, we'll look at that in a minute. There was changes made to May seventh, but we're on June fourth right now.
Right. Well, I move to accept the minutes from June fourth as written.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm sorry, who was the second? Thanks.
Can we do the minutes at the beginning of the meeting? Review prior minutes at the beginning of the meeting?
I know, because now I'm like...
I think it'll provide me the opportunity to kind of remember where we were the last time, especially for things that are being carried forward to the next meeting.
You want to do them first?
I'd like to do them at the beginning, because like here, we're talking about the sexually violent predator in permanent housing, that was a big part of our conversation, that would have probably brought me up to speed faster on that conversation.
If we move them to the beginning of the meeting?
From now on, just move them to the, yeah? There's no reason...
I would just say, if there's a big crowd here, you may want to choose to put them at the end of the meeting, just so people aren't waiting for you to go through the minutes, but I think as a standard practice, put it at the beginning, and you guys can manually move it to the end by rearranging the meeting.
Or do it like immediately after public hearing part, if there's people waiting, but yeah, that way, our brains are around what we've done before, before it comes back on us.
Yeah, okay. No, that's good. So there was some changes made to the May seventh, is that correct, Carrie?
Yes, based on the comments that I received at the June meeting, I made changes to the May minutes. You all had voted to approve them with changes, so you don't have to vote on it again, I just wanted to give you back the corrected minutes, just for your review.
Gotcha. All right. So is that it? Anything else? Anything exciting happening? Like Starbucks, and Arby's?
And Dutch Brothers.
Where are they going? What?
Yeah, it was all over Facebook today.
Next to Walmart.
They, for sure?
They've got a permit in.
Who? Oh, my goodness.
What comment period on that one, so I'm not going to say too much, I'll wait for the commentary to end, and then...
Oh, my gosh, I thought that suit might be...
So what's going on with the gas station controversy?
I can talk to you offline about it.
Okay. Oh, okay, meeting's adjourned.
Okay.